I know. He got some of them also. No, you hear it last. Lee Palmer is the HR director at the time.
Yeah, I hear it.
You guys.
I guess nobody called us for a rec. Poor Darian.
Very good. Well, she's in fourteen, she's in fifteen, fourteen. I gotta call her.
Because she just stuck. Four hundred thousand dollars stuck within the middle of the year. No previous warning. And then a five hundred thousand dollar bill at the end of the year. No previous.
Well, there's more now. I said to.
Maureen told me that there's like ten additional out places.
Yeah, what was that? This was supposed to be kids coming back. I suppose this guy is on that, some looking for.
Yeah.
Really. And they've done nothing, absolutely nothing. Now the program over the road, which was supposed to be.
I mean, it's there. That's the pilot.
That was supposed to bring back eight, ten kids. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Put somebody of her caliber.
I don't. I don't know.
We take more.
It's a long, it's a long story. I kind of, I kind of think it should be poured through. Right or wrong, you add too many, you add too many things.
Yeah. We're splitting that half. But we have.
I think, I think it's important enough, this whole budget to bring her, to bring that person.
Just because the amount of impact that every time we try to do all of this planning and we create a rational budget and then every year we take these unexpected, you know, unannounced, unplanned, four hits. We find like five hundred thousand dollars. That's not suddenly as minimal placements. That's consulting bills built up over the course of a year.
Mike, these, that's when everyone thought back in April, these were, you know, these were things that just happened. Remember we're figuring out if this is coming out to like fifty seven thousand kids for three months? These came back in January and February.
Yeah.
These weren't, you know.
All right. You can accumulate that kind of money in a short period of time. Mr. Lyons.
Oh, boss.
How are you?
How you doing?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, how you doing?
How you doing, Mr. Connolly? Mr. Superintendent? I guess I'm here, right?
This is his last meeting is super.
Okay.
Last meeting is super. Ah, wow, wow. It was a quick six months, huh?
It wasn't even six months. Some days it felt like six.
Seems like three years.
Well, it depends on the days. Some days it went back fast, other days. It was easy.
You gotta take it, you know, you gotta, you gotta roll.
It's just a breeze, just a breeze.
Well, rolling with the punches.
No, I just.
Hey, I.
Hey. Already texted me a couple of minutes ago, said to be here five minutes.
Okay, so fine, we don't have to worry about public comments, okay?
I assume Mike, as usual, will be a little late.
Steer dirt.
The cooler is probably sweating. I drive all the way from Warwick, Vermont, Warwick, Rhode Island, and I always get here before he drives across from waiting.
You find, you find less traffic or more traffic in the summertime?
Uh, less during the week. I mean, I just, it's noticeably lighter. I think also probably some people started their vacation at the weekend and they're out all week. How's your daughter making?
She actually likes it, yeah, she, um.
I almost have to drive up there tomorrow to Westerly. They lost a check.
My son's there.
They lost a check. I sent him a check to rent his house, half of the house, three weeks ago. And he wanted, didn't want to let me in.
No, 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 no.
So it, uh.
Do you stay up there for the summer?
A couple of weeks.
Yeah.
In Watch Hill.
Okay. Drive right by there all the time. Cause I work in Warwick.
Right.
And I have a little apartment in Providence for a couple of months if we come up there. Right on the campus of Brown University. Constantly surrounded by college kids.
What street are you?
Bowen Street. Exactly, it's right near Thayer, you know, which is the main drag.
Yeah, that's where the bookstore is. There's a.
All the restaurants and shops.
I know there's a lot of Asian restaurants around there.
Yeah. Providence has a happy hunting ground for restaurants. Yeah.
All the Italians.
I used to have one years ago.
Right downtown.
Yeah, five minutes earlier. Anything before that is.
River Walk and.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've done that several times, go to the, like, Water Fire. That's so fun.
You guys in the suits, I need a shower.
He's got, he's got a tie. At a funeral. Yeah. Got dress appropriate. Okay, one to go.
Yeah, one more.
How you doing?
What were you in about?
Good.
Um, Mike.
Uh.
I say Mike, he will come in.
Mike or anybody else qualifies as a form.
Yeah. I'm thinking you might be the first one in. It's my estimation, but.
You get the presentation?
I shouldn't. I need to make sure she does.
Cheryl Stephanie.
Oh, she's not?
No, she texted me a little while ago, so she's still feeling sick. So I was, we do this a lot on Sunday afternoons. We go up to Cranwell Park, get into playing a playground. We, we usually, they're setting something up sometimes and like.
Right.
Usually don't think anything about it. DJ, sad, playing music so loud. I said, geez, I wonder if this is gonna be a problem. Who knew? I mean, we got out there, it was fine, we went home.
I've already, I've already raised.
It was so loud across the mall. I never heard the music that loud.
They went before, they went before the council. And they went through the bar.
They weren't talking about what they're doing. And then we go to the change the name. I said, we'll bring it up later. I don't want it to be a lobbying.
I didn't see a real problem, but I thought it was, um, playing music.
Change your name.
But I've never seen it like that. They got me thinking, wow, you got the real cops out there playing music.
Yeah. I, it, uh.
Well, they had a motto.
I've already been in touch with Jerry and the chief and Mike Mulgane. I said, we're gonna need you over some work in the agency. You know, they didn't get, I don't know if they were just selling alcohol. They were charging to get in. It was a paid event. It wasn't like a party for some.
So they made a lot of money.
So I told them, they paid nineteen hundred dollars for.
Is that beer?
And they have a thousand dollar bond. I said, we're not giving that bond because of all the, the officers had to stay overtime to wait for the.
Oh, yeah, we should be sending them a bill.
I, I, I would live in my.
Sit down and start.
Let me text. No, we need some. Mike, we'll text him.
He's right there.
Oh, he's here. Okay.
You never know.
Can't see him.
Hey, Mayor, that door is locked.
Hello, friends. Mr. Mayor, I sure have been seeing a lot of you. Oh, my God, there's an FTC here.
It's okay, fine.
I don't want to accuse.
The whole.
I didn't want to get accused. I like the tree I was saying. All right, you ready? All right, I'm gonna call this meeting the Board of Education order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, please. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Go over to Mr. Kessimas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comment section, when I call your name, please come up to the podium. Before you begin, we need your name and your address for the tape. Also, you'll be limited to three minutes. At about thirty seconds left, I will wave my hand. So please close at that time. And also, please keep your comments civil. Let's see, first we have, um, Scaramaccia. I can't read the first name. Terry, Terry. There it is.
Good evening. My name is Terry Scaramaccia. I live at Eight Colonial Place in Norwalk. And I'm a teacher at Wolf Pit School. And that is why I'm here speaking tonight. I am very concerned about the lack of leadership we are facing at our school. As you are aware, the, there is no principal at this time. The past school year ended with many issues unresolved. And I'll name just a few. There are four maternity leaves in the building that require long-term subs. And none have been assigned at this time. Currently, there are no classroom supplies for students ordered for the coming year. There is no intern finalized to assist in the school. There is a vacancy for an intervention aide with no posting to date. There are no finalized class lists of students in all grade levels. And the list goes on. All these situations directly affect our students. This past year, we had a site director at Wolf Pit who had been a loyal employee of Norwalk Public Schools for many years. Maureen Jones. She has proven to be the right fit for Wolf Pit. In the absence of the principal last year, during an extended medical leave, she ran the school effectively and efficiently. She knows the Norwalk system and can quickly get our school back on track for the beginning of the new school year. Assigning Ms. Jones as principal will not only impact our students positively this year, but for many future years. I hope you will consider this to best serve our Wolf Pit students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Lori Hall.
My name is Lori Hall. I live at Two Rising Road, Norwalk. This is the fourth time I have come before you to question why I still have not received any report from Bruce Morris, Director of Human Relations for the Norwalk School System, supplying the results of his investigation relating to me. I am still waiting for him to explain the reasoning behind his email on October twenty second, two thousand fourteen, stating, I am not to be assigned a program on Norwalk Public Schools buildings or programs. I want to point out that he did this to a private citizen and Norwalk taxpayer. I was not an employee of the Norwalk School System at the time. Because my termination from one job, inability to accept another, and loss of ability to apply for others. I received two emails in November two thousand fourteen from Bruce Morris telling me when his report would be completed. It is now July two thousand fifteen, eight months later, and still no report. This is ridiculous. Not only have I not received the report, but I have yet to be extended the courtesy of any communication from Mr. Morris since November. Bruce Morris caused me loss of income, bullied me, and as I have stated before, defamed my character by inference. It seems as though he acts with impunity. If Mr. Connolly is in contact with Bruce Morris, as Mr. Connolly has stated on the record in the past, call him. Bruce Morris has stated he's available after hours and weekends. This is very simple. Either there is a report or there isn't. Why isn't this man being held accountable? As a taxpayer, I want an answer.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Bruce Millian.
Good evening, Bruce Millian, Nine Mod Avenue. I bring to you not good news, but what I think is great news. As you know, and many of you attended, we have our literacy program, Literacy for Parents for Their Children. We've been three presentations at Brookside Elementary School. The last one was in this building in the concert hall. All have been exceptionally received positively. And in fact, at the reconciliation, you saw to put seventy five thousand dollars into the budget so the program can continue. And on behalf of my colleagues and myself, we say thank you very much. But this is going to a new platitude starting next week. We submitted to the American Federation of Teachers, the Teach Convention in Washington, DC, to go to make a presentation about the project. And we were accepted. We were one of the first ones to submit and one of the first ones to be accepted in the whole country. There'll be two thousand three hundred teachers there, but we will be presenting a workshop next Monday, July thirteenth in the afternoon, for one and three quartered hours about the program, how it's structured, what's it's accomplished. And hopefully, it'll be a model that others may be able to duplicate in their districts across the country. Maybe not perfectly, maybe they'll adjust it, maybe they'll adapt it. But anyway, we think that it's a model should be considered and would move forward other districts as well. If we have parents who have the skill set to some degree of how to work with their own children, it only makes it better for when those children come to school. And that is the bottom line. And we think it's worthy of sharing. Obviously, others believe it's worthy of being shared. And we just hope that it'll go well. We sure it'll go well. And also, it brings recognition of a positive nature. Norwalk Public Schools, Norwalk Board of Education, Norwalk Community, Connecticut. It's just all very, very positive and very good. And again, we thank you for your support. And I'm sure Cory and others will run a story and hopefully it'll read as well as it's read up to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Mr. John Mosby.
Good evening, my lady, John Mosby. Fifteen Addison Avenue, South Norwalk, Connecticut. I was here at the last voting, remember, at the last vote meeting, and I spoke about Bridge. And not only this is the first time, this is about ten times. And I don't understand why we live in the community. We signed a petition over four hundred people in our community about keeping Bridge open as an alternate school to help depol and disadvantaged kids. I also spoke about getting the money up there to fix that school up. I told you, I talked to Dr. Allen. And she's been contacting me and we've been talking from the community point of view. For some reason, we never get no money to fix up Bridge and never have us, the parents, involved. And I know y'all look at the TV on channel fifty nine up in Hartford the other day. You see how them people talking in Hartford doing so good. Them parents were talking about what that school was, how dirty they off there with the, it was all there. And how they running that school so down for the minority. The same way it going here with Bridge now. Y'all go in the back room, make back room deal, make graduate about twenty or thirty kids when that school hit over two hundred and some kids. But especially adding them kids, y'all don't wanna fix that school up. And I'm putting you on notice tonight that starting this week, we're gonna bring us lawsuit against the city of Norwalk, the Board of Education, and also the State Department that you are discriminating against us. We're sick and tired of y'all getting all this money, putting it in Norwalk High, giving the good kids the thing, but that Bridge is looking like a pigpen. And there ain't nothing wrong with Bridge. Y'all kill Bridge. And what you using Bridge for? It's just to get the money to do, to run to Norwalk Community College. We want to be involved. We wanna be that taxpayer as citizen, community leader. I had thirty-three years in this school system, and I'm not gonna back up. So I wanna thank you all very, and we want an answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Ms. Sue Remson.
Good evening. My name is Sue Remson. I reside at eighteen Tanglewood Lane. I'm a parent and also a teacher and currently teaching at Ponus Ridge Middle School. I've been teaching in Norwalk for twenty-three years. And a couple of us have come to show our support for Dr. Lewis. We know there hasn't been an official decision made, and we just wanted you to know how much we love him. And we think he's an outstanding leader, and he's going to do great things at Ponus, and we hope you believe in him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all this signed up for public comments, Mr. Chairman?
All right. One comment I wanted to make regarding Ms. Hall's statements. Part of what she's talking about in terms of her claims relating to Mr. Morris are clearly personal matters. If she's claiming libel or something like that, that's obviously something that's up for a court to decide is not within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. And the, you know, as has been pointed out, yes, she's spoken four times to the board. Our policies are clear that board members should not comment on complaints directed against individual employees of the school system. Mr. Connolly has been addressing this issue, and it is an administrative level issue. So no one should conclude that because the board has not been commenting on these statements, that it means we don't care about them or ignoring them. We're simply following our own policies, which say that we're not supposed to comment on, on individual complaints about school employees. Superintendent's report, Mr. Connolly.
Okay, good evening. This will be my last report to the board. Four months have gone by, or five months have gone by pretty quickly. Some days I feel like five years, other days, and tonight it feels like five minutes. There is a couple of things, announcements, I just, and I really wanna thank the whole board for their cooperation during the, during the time I've been here. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the support, appreciate the civility, and I appreciate robust discussions when discussions have to be robust. At the same time, I just wanted to announce two things. One, that we do, we, I have appointed Dr. Maureen Ruby as the Acting Director of Special Education. Dr. Ruby is previously and will still have responsibility for our early literacy program. But she does have an excellent special ed background. I think she's quite capable of filling in until, until the district selects a permanent director of special education. And I can tell you from the last four days since she's been the director, she and I have had a lot of conversations. She has a very, very busy agenda, and I think she's handling it quite well. And the other announcement I wanted to make is, as you know, we lost Rich Roodell to Weston. And we do have an interim Director of Business, and he's here tonight. I just wanted to introduce him to the board, and that's Mr. William Keely. And again, Mr. Keely will be the. Mr. Keely will be the interim until the district selects a, a permanent business official. There is a couple of things that I know Dr. Adamowski will be coming in and doing his, his entry plan, which is very important. But I just wanted to give the board a list of things that are ongoing now. And I just wanna make sure that you're aware of them and they don't get lost in the, in the shuffle. Some of them are quite, quite exciting. Some of them are commitments that I've made on behalf of the district to.
Give one more?
Oh, I'm sorry. That I've made on behalf of the district to other agencies that I really think it's important that those, those be fulfilled. One is Norwalk Axe. We have, Norwalk Axe for several years have, has been proposing a study of children's attitudes and behaviors through a survey instrument. And they did approach me at, in the very beginning of this process. I didn't, I don't think our folks understood what this instrument was going to do. And I think sometimes the folks at Axe didn't. And I've had a lot of experience in, in, in having these surveys done in many school districts. I'm quite frankly, not surprised a community like Norwalk hasn't done one of these surveys several years ago. And the whole idea of the survey is to, is to assess kids' behaviors as well as their attitudes, as well as their strengths. And usually, out of that survey comes a strategic plan for the whole city of Norwalk, just not the school system and dealing with, with children's issues. The, so I just wanna update you on where that survey is. I've used a model in Nogatuck that did the survey last year, and I think got successful results from it. And the Nogatuck model was a model that was really adopted throughout the state of Connecticut. The survey we proposed would take place for all students in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. It would be conducted in both of our high schools, all three of our high schools, including Briggs, as well as our middle schools in grade seven and eight. I don't propose that the survey be done in sixth grade. I think some of the questions and some of the survey material, I don't think is appropriate for youngsters that age. We have reviewed the survey with the principals of those schools. They've seen it, and we've made a decision that we would make our children available to have this survey conducted. My suggestion to Axe that we would do it sometime in October. And the next step on this really is to bring it to the curriculum committee. I know that the chairman and I had discussion about this earlier. Unfortunately, we, we didn't have a curriculum committee meeting in, in June. But my suggestion is that this survey, the agreement actually, to do the survey be presented to the curriculum committee, who will then hopefully bring it to the full board for approval. With the intent again that the, the survey took place in October. You probably, the, the Norwalk community would get the results back, interpreted, et cetera, I would think by January. So it really bring, it really allows the community to put in a real robust program for youth at all levels. So Brenda Williams is really the person that's worked with me on this. And Brenda, Brenda will be bringing the materials to the next curriculum committee meeting. But I think it's something that this community has talked about for three or four years, and I think we're ready to do it. And I think it'll also demonstrate a real cooperative agree, a cooperative relationship that we're all working for Norwalk kids. The school system, the various social service agencies, et cetera. And there is a, an agreement, a contract that would be approved hopefully by the curriculum committee and the board. And Dr. Adamowski could then execute it on behalf of the district. But there's a whole protocol on how to do this. And that's the most important thing, that the district, as well as Axe, follow that protocol on how to do it. Main thing is, parents need to know about this. It's not something we wanna sneak onto parents. So if this survey is to take place, there would be plenty of parent notification. The survey itself would be, be made available if parents wanted to look at it. And if they had some issues on, on the appropriateness of some of the questions being asked, they certainly have the option to opt out of the survey. Most communities, the survey has gone well with very little controversy. There have been some communities, it brings to mind Litchfield last year, that they felt some of the questions were inappropriate or too invasive. And, and the board up there, I think, at one point, decided not to go forward with the survey. But by and large, ninety-nine percent of school districts have gotten, have gotten board approval and conducted the survey. Board approval and conducted the survey and I think very successfully.
Are you any other question on that?
You're starting to scare me with the whole parents thing.
Right.
What are we doing this for? And?
We're doing it to really assess the, assess the condition of youth in Norwalk.
What exactly, can we see the survey?
Oh, yeah.
What exactly are we looking for?
They're gonna ask, it asks a variety of questions. They ask questions about their comfort level, what's important to them in family life. Also ask questions about behavior. Couple of questions on drug use or drug availability, questions on how they feel about bullying. Do they, do they ever feel bullied? Do they feel safe in school? Where do they feel safe? Where do they, where do they go where they feel comfort? Do they go to church groups? Do they go to recreation groups? So the results of this survey, I think, have a meaning for every, every facet of this community that works with kids.
What part is the inappropriate part?
I guess you have to tell, I think it's very appropriate. I think some of the questions that people, they've asked about mental health, some people might feel this intrusive into family, you know, into family life. There's a couple of questions on drug use, which, do you use drugs? Do you see if drugs are available, which I think is quite appropriate. There used to be more questions about sexual activities, there's only a few about that now, one or two. And that's probably where, I think, where some parents would say, maybe this is not appropriate for my kid. But I think when it's, it's scientifically done, it's not a, and, you know, if, if some people feel very, very, very strongly about the appropriateness of some of the questions, they certainly have the right to opt out. And that's why they wanna make sure that the, the survey is, you know, we don't sneak it out there. The, you know, it's, there's a protocol on announcing it, there's a protocol that every parent of students seven through twelve in the school district would get both a written announcement and a robo-call that the survey's gonna be done. And normally what happens is if a parent wants to review the survey, the survey's available for them in their, in the school office to take a look at. One thing you don't do is copy the survey and hand it out. It's almost like an exam.
Right.
You know, you want, and we, and you try to do the survey at the same time in all the schools. So you don't have one kid, you know, one group of kids, let's say middle school, do the survey on a Monday and they go home and tell their, their peers or their siblings what was on the survey. So the whole idea is to take, to take a time and administer the survey district-wide on that day.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes, this is an excellent, excellent idea because academics and student behavior and attitudes, they all play an important role in student achievement.
Sure.
I think this is a wonderful, a wonderful look towards what we're missing along the lines. And it would be excellent though if after the survey is completed, which I'm going to ask if it's available besides English and other languages, to, to, to help the parents understand the importance of something, of this type of a survey. Also, if we can have some kind of data from this and try to take advantage of this point since you have from grade seven to twelve, so maybe by, by middle school, like let's say, what, what were the results in Ponus? Maybe there's something, there's something specific that's common along what, what that school needs in, in respect to, to behavior and it'll help with the response to intervention. I think that it would, it would help on a larger scope. So it, it would, if, if there's something that could be made available to the Board per school-wise.
Yeah, I mean, the, the thing you have to top, we have to watch out for, and the results will be aggregated on a district-wide basis. And the, the survey is anonymous. You know, we've had in the past in some school districts, parents have committed, I wanted to see what my kids said on the survey. Survey's anonymous. The child's, the child's name is not on it. All we know is it was done by a child in grade whatever in the school. And then the results are sent out to the, the company that actually produces the survey. So, and I, I don't suggest we do it. You'll have information across the district for a certain age level. But it's not gonna say all seventh graders in Ponus Ridge School find this versus seventh graders in Rotten Middle School. So, and the same thing with the high schools. You're, you're just gonna get a survey that would show all kids in tenth grade or all seven, you know, seventeen and eighteen-year-old kids feel this way.
Right, that's, it's still, it's still, it's still a good idea though that it's done district-wide because we can get more of an idea of what's happening at this grade level.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing, the main thing is this can create a roadmap, just not for the school system, but really for everyone that works with children in this community. I'm sorry, Chairman?
Yeah, the opt-out option. If, how, how will that work? Let's say that there's twenty-five questions on there and maybe twenty of them is to a person is appropriate, the other five they feel is inappropriate. Do they answer those twenty or do, once they hit opt-out?
They just, they can just opt out. I imagine, I'm not gonna suggest it, but I can imagine if we ask the kids during the time limit to answer all the questions, if a child, if a child decided they wanted to skip a question, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. But, you know, you, you can't opt out, so you can take the, the, the survey, but, you know, you don't have to respond to seven or eight questions. So you come in, you're taking the whole survey. The percentage of students that I've seen opt out has been very small. It's a couple of times, and, you know, you learn by other people's mistakes. Some districts attempted to do the survey in middle schools that had sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. And some of the sixth-grade parents really, and they were right, really thought that some of the, some of those questions are very, very inappropriate for a sixth grader. They, the survey has been tweaked a little bit. The, the feds who, who support some of this work, particularly in anti-drug situations, they've asked a couple of questions removed. And I don't think Axe, the, the people that know Axe, they originally wanted to do an older survey that I, that, that was no longer valid. And the survey that we're, we're talking about now, I think, has a two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and twelve copyright date.
And your recommendation is for it to come to the Curriculum Committee first?
Yeah. Yeah, and you'll get a sense at the Curriculum Committee of, of the types of questions, et cetera. And, but my, my main thing is I don't wanna, I think parents, we have to be very, very transparent about this. We have to let parents know what we are doing before they go home and tell their, you know, their parents, hey, I took a survey today and guess what it asked me?
Yeah.
Right, that's why we make sure that we have some kind of control.
But, but Brenda is, you know, there's a, you know, there is a, a protocol. There's a very direct, what Norwalk Axe will be responsible for, they will actually be responsible to, for the administration. We'll make our children available, but they have to bring surveys, they have to bring us the pencils, everything that the survey requires mechanically, they have to do all that. And we wanna make sure it's as, as least disruptive as it can be. And I, I think for the time we put in and the time we make kids available to, to administer the survey to them, at the same time, I think the results we get back are invaluable.
And those, those results, since Norwalk Axe is, I guess, leading there?
Pardon me?
Norwalk Axe, those, those results, are, are those, those results going to be Norwalk Public Schools?
Well, my, my suggestion as part of, my suggestion, since we made the survey, we made the children available to them, I think the first report should go to the Board of Education. And that's what's happening in other, other communities. All of the, all of the interpretations don't necessarily affect what we do in the schools. But I think the Board of Education should have the first look at it. And since, and there's a protocol that I'll, that Brenda will have, that, you know, she'll be able to bring to the Curriculum Committee.
I agree with that. I think the Board needs to have that kind of control and see what's really?
Yeah, I think some people, you know, some of our own people thought this is a survey to come up with what's wrong. It's, you know, and what's wrong with the schools or what the schools aren't doing for the kids. That's not the purpose of the survey at all. It's really what this community, what, what good things this community is doing that we should support, as well as other things in the community in general that, that need to be done. And most communities have used it very, very positively. In, in some parts of the state, they've been doing this for twenty, twenty-five years. I think, I would ask that the, Waterbury did this last year, the year before, for the first time, and they have a significant ELL population. So I'm gonna suggest that, that our people get in touch with the people in Waterbury on just how they handle the, the significant ELL population. And also the, also for some of the special ed population. I don't wanna exclude them from the survey at all. And so we have to make some accommodations so they can, so they can respond to the survey. The, the second thing is, is good news, and I just wanna make sure it's, it's all tied up before I leave. We have developed a, a budget for the After the Bell Program at South Norwalk Community Center. It will be a combination of funding from Title I, which is federal money, and also from the state after-school program, state money. We did meet with Mr. Penya, the President of the South Norwalk Community Center last week, along with Mr. Camaccio, who's our attorney. We've gone over the budget, everyone's in agreement, everyone's in agreement on, or we're, we know where the money's coming from. And I'm hopeful to be able to sign a contract or an agreement to establish the program before I leave at the end of the week. So I think we're in very good shape there. There's no question where funding is coming from or who's gonna do what. And both South, South Norwalk Community Center and our own people, particularly Trish, Brenda, and, and Natalia, and those were the players in putting the budget together. And I'm very pleased with where we're going. So I don't think there'll be any hiccups on getting the program going in, in, in September. The third thing is a partnership that was, that we have established with the, where you hear it sometimes, well, the chief being a former law enforcement. It was an invitation from the U.S. Attorney for the District of Connecticut, Attorney Deidre Daly. She reached out to school districts in a positive way, saying that there are several, there are several federal agencies that really wanna work with schools on, on some trending and also on some educational issues. So she established a working group that included people from the FBI, from DEA, from the Project Longevity that her, her office is doing right now with three big cities out of the U.S. Attorney's Office, and also people from OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, which does compliance investigations primarily in, against school districts on discrimination, on special education, on ELL learners, et cetera. And U.S. Attorney Daly specifically asked that she'd like to do something, some partnerships with the city of Norwalk. And I discussed these actually yesterday with Lieutenant Gonzalez in the, in the Police Department. She's looking to really develop some positive urban models, rather than compliance investigatory models, really to work with districts on, on trending issues. And some of them are, you know, I think are very, very appropriate to Norwalk. Obviously, they're looking at drug prevention among youth, et cetera, and there's some helpful there. Project Longevity is something right now which is attempting to reduce, reduce youth violence primarily in the three big cities, but I think they would like to also go into some of the intermediate cities. Two, three of the areas that really jump out at me, you know, where we could use help and partnership. One is the school-to-prison pipeline. And we've had, we've had demonstrations here, we'd have young people come in and, and point out to us that this is a trend. I don't think our, our stats in Norwalk are bad, but they could be better. And so the U.S. Attorney's Office is certainly willing to do some positive work with us on that. They asked for, she asked for, for schools that I, that would like to work with individual schools. And at this point, I've offered them, I've offered them West Rocks Middle School, Norwalk High School as a school that could work with, working with kids all the way from sixth grade through twelfth grade. And they're doing a lot of, West, West Rocks right now is doing quite a bit of, of violence prevention, positive reinforcement work anyway. So it works right into what they're doing there as well as the high school. Bullying is another area where the, where they'd like to work with us on, and I certainly think there's, there's room for collaboration there. And the last, the last are really trending areas where I, I looked to good prac, I looked to best practices. One is the area of English language learners, which are, which are protected, which are protected class and when there are issues, OCR will come in and investigate. But OCR, Office of Civil Rights is also wants to, to make us aware of some of the best practices. She pointed out to me, the OCR just completed a three-year investigation, compliance review investigation with the city of Stanford. And there were some very interesting things, not the findings, but some of the trending and some of their suggestions on programming. And quite frankly, our, our ELL demographics are not dissimilar to Stanford. We have less, but if you take a look at the, if you take a look at the composition, the trending, the types of students that we're getting through migration, through, they're very, very similar. So I think they can be very helpful with ELL learners. Special education, very definitely. I think if we take a look at the number of, of special ed disputes we have in this district, parents going to hearings, even lawsuits, they're far too many. And so I'm hopeful that OCR, working with us under the Americans with Disability Act, could really, could really be helpful to us in, in not only making sure how to be in compliance, but also share best practices with us. And the last one is 504, the Rehabilitation Act, which is similar to, but a little different than the Special Education Act. And again, under 504, the, under 504, the Office of Civil Rights is the agency that, that oversees that, particularly in compliance. So I think it's a very positive thing. I think that I'd rather have the federal government in here as my friend and partner at any time, rather than coming in to investigate a complaint or to do a compliance review. It wasn't easy telling, telling, you know, telling some of our administrators, guess what? You have a new friend. And your new friend is the U.S. Attorney in, in her office. But I think everyone sees this as a, as a positive. I've talked to special education, obviously, Dr. Ruby is aware of it and really, I think, welcomes it, you know, given some of the complexities that she is having in special ed. Pauline Becker welcomes it and the two, the two principals welcome it. So I, so I'm, I'm excited about it. And we're, and this will be going, we don't have a, a structure yet, but I expect the U.S. Attorney and, and her staff will be working with us early into next year to develop a very positive structure and positive relationship. The, two other things the Board should be aware of, one is the whole issue of site directors. We did, we did engage an outside evaluator to take a look at the site director positions, how they were, how they were introduced this year, how they were used, and what's their future. And quite frankly, if they, if they, if they're used correctly, they could have a very great future. They could be really a model in, in implementing the Common Core, which was their original intent. So I just wanted to report to the Board that the, the first phase of that, that evaluation will be available by the fifteenth. And, you know, I'll certainly let Dr. Adamowski know and the Board ought to know, there will be some suggestions in the report on, on restructuring and, and reorganizing some of the structure for the site directors. But I think it's, I think by and large, it will give us a, a real good roadmap to make sure we're getting the best that we can from those positions. And, you know, it really shows a commitment on the, on the part of the Norwalk School District that instruction is paramount. And to have a site director really focusing most of their time on curriculum, particularly in, in literacy and numeracy, is, I think, a positive. So we just wanna make sure that these positions are structured, structured correctly and, and everyone has the, everyone needs to have the same understanding, quite frankly, of what their role is. Their role can't be ten different or twelve different roles, depending on, you know, what school they're in. So part of the, I think- So part of the, I think part of the evaluation report is going to be a very strong recommendation that they, there be a clear understanding on everyone's part of their roles and how those roles should be carried out. On funding, uh, right now and talking to, um, we currently have 12, and I'm hoping that we can fund, uh, with no problem at all, 10 of the 12 this year. And that, that funding, I've already talked to Italia Negroni, and we've identified the funding. So we're, you know, the, uh, there are two site directors that will be, at least one will be, uh, is retired, so we might not be replacing people. Uh, but there will be, um, there will be at least 10 site directors, uh, as opposed to 12, that we can, that we can fund for the 15, 16th school year. And all, just so every, all schools will have one. Um, the bigger schools, obviously, uh, with the more challenging and needy, uh, populations will have a full-time site director. Uh, there is a possibility, if we can only fund 10 out of 12, then, um, four schools will have part-time site directors as, as opposed to full-time site directors. But that, I, I assume will be done on a, uh, on some kind of criteria basis that would include the population of the school, number of students, as well as the number of students who are in, in need of, based on academic performance and outcomes, um, uh, based on their need. But I, uh, but I would assume all of the larger elementary schools will have a full-time one. And the last one is just, um, one of the things I'd like to, I guess, refer to the, uh, to Artie's committee. Uh, we have been working at Briggs, um, which is a turnaround school for, uh, this year. And I really got caught up in, in a positive way in some of the things that, uh, Dr. Allen and her staff were doing at Briggs. And, um, I, I think, well, there's two issues here. One, I think the, I think people have to know some of the improvements and some of the plans for the future that, that the school staff has. That's number one. And number two, uh, we feel out of that, that we ought to be looking at a rebranding. It's still Briggs in a different way, and in no way, shape, or form are we denigrating Dr. Briggs's role in the school. It's a different, unfortunately, or unfortunately, times have changed. And the, the Briggs High School that was very effective, and maybe we can, we can, um, revive of 20 or 30 years ago, is very different from the Briggs School today. And so part of the philosophy of the school is, uh, they would like to brand it in a way that's more reflective of Briggs in 2015, as opposed to, you know, 2000 or, or in the 19, in the late 1900s, or not 20th century. I could just tell you that, you know, way, way, way back, uh, Dr. Briggs was iconic. Um, I knew of Dr. Briggs just by reputation. And Norwalk at one time had some iconic superintendents that were well-respected throughout the state and throughout the country. And Dr. Briggs was one of them. And, uh, we just want to assure everyone that changing, that his name is in the school, or the proposal for his name, uh, to stay at the school is in recognition of Dr. Briggs' contribution and, uh, his development of school. There wouldn't be a Briggs if Dr. Briggs didn't, uh, didn't develop it and, and bring it to Norwalk. So I don't know if, technically, tonight I was just going to pass out, uh, what their proposal is, and then hopefully, I think Artie, your committee, can take a look at it, and then, um, come back to the full, you know, hear from Dr. Dr. Allen and, um, and Brenda Williams. Brenda's on vacation, has been working on my behalf with, uh, with, uh, Dr. Allen too on this. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add right now, Marie.
I think it's important to hear from just the student why.
Pardon me?
The students.
No, the students.
Hear from the students.
This isn't the committee. This is just to give them a...
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Evelyn Busira, and I'm rising to be a senior at Briggs High School right now.
Can you put the mic a little closer to him?
My name is Evelyn Busira, and I'm rising to be a senior right now at Briggs High School. At first, um, I used to think Briggs was like really bad and everything, like of the things I've heard from other people. But my brother, he, he graduated from Richard C. Briggs High School last year, and now he is currently in the Marines, and he convinced me to be at Briggs so I could be like a better person, have better grades. And I finished my junior year with a 3.9 GPA because of all my teachers. So it's like the school has helped me to be a better person and to get better grades that I've never expected at Norwalk High or at Bryan McMahon.
Good job.
We've done a lot over the last three years, and this coming year is our last year as part of the turnaround, the state turnaround process. We are looking to sustain what we've implemented so far, and part of that will come through a partnership with Norwalk Community College. And the students will attend Norwalk Community College two times a week in the afternoon and participate in a Pathway Academy. It will be in the healthcare field, technology, the trades, or civil service. And hopefully, the students will gain credits and, uh, elective credits in addition to hours towards a license. And we're really looking to try and grow our own, and hopefully, some of the students that are participating in civil service or the trades will find jobs within the city government and/or the school district. We're very excited about this, and we'd like to rename Briggs the Pathways Academy at Briggs. And I hope that the board will take it under consideration and really help. I think, um, we've worked very hard at getting the word out about what we've done in trying to improve Briggs, but I think with the final name change, that may assist as well. And I also wanted to thank you, Mr. Conley, for your support, and it's been greatly appreciated. We'll miss you. Thank you.
Okay. Now, you have, you have to come back to, uh, to Artie's committee and, and show why we need to change it.
Certainly, we have a PowerPoint presentation for you, Mr. Kasimis.
Yeah, it's called rebranding, really. That's the image. And the, the other thing, it's, you know, something that I think we can do administratively, but, uh, there are a couple of programs at Briggs that I think, uh, better belong in, uh, in social service agency. One is the, uh, the program for expelled students.
Yes.
And so, uh, you know, I think when Dr. Adamowski comes in, uh, you might, you know, talk to him about, uh, about moving that to somewhere else, because I...
That's a great idea.
It's, it's not compatible, quite frankly, with, with the program you have going on in Briggs.
Absolutely, because we're turning into a, an academic school, and the expulsion program, that's the ACE program, is not part of Briggs. It's a district program. It's just housed at Briggs. So many people think it's part of a Briggs program, and it's not. Um, we just have teachers that work from 3:00 to 6:00 with those students. So that would be wonderful.
And one of the things I just want to underscore again, it's community support. Um, a lot of it's supported through the turnaround grant we have from the state, but, uh, Briggs has a really strong, robust partnership with the Carver Center.
Yes, we do.
So they're not out there alone. They're, it's really, uh, it's really a wraparound kind of program. And those of you that went to the Briggs graduation, that we held at Bryan McMahon, you could tell the, you know, the, it's, it's a good school, and, and the kids are, you know, that graduating was a significant achievement for many of them, but, um, the spirit and the, of the students and the staff was, was palpable. You could really pick it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, you know, my, my hope is these five things don't, don't lose their, don't lose them. And as you can see, the people that are responsible to, uh, move them along with you, with the board, Brenda, Brenda Williams is important, really, uh, three of them, um, and Marie and Brenda on, mostly on the rebranding, and Bruce Morris with the, uh, with the U.S. Attorney's Office. And again, I want to thank the board and, and the staff. It's, it's been a, it's been a very pleasant, and I, for me, very, very fruitful, uh, five months.
Thank you. All right.
As you can see, I'm ready to leave. I have my tox ciders on.
All right. So we'll move along to actions. Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Welford.
I have one question. This U.S. Attorney of Connecticut, Bruce Morris, what exactly is the goal of that?
With this?
The fact that...
Uh, the U.S. Attorney is looking for one person to, uh, to just, you know, who, who's their liaison here? Once they've come in here, um, uh, they're, you know, they would just want one person at this point to kind of be the, uh, the guidepost. But once they come in here, they'll be working directly with, uh, uh, obviously with the two principals at the high, at, uh, West Rocks and at Norwalk High. They'll be working directly with, uh, Dr. Ruby in special education. They'll be working directly with, um, with, uh, Dr. Becker in, in ELL, et cetera.
Action. I'm going first.
Ms. Rivas?
Oh, no, I'm waiting for the action segment. We'll first, before you see Artie make a motion.
All right. We're going to move to item five, actions, approval of personnel. Uh, is there a motion to approve the personnel items? Ms. Rivas?
Yes.
Is there a second? By Mr. Barbous. All right. Uh, motion is approved and seconded to, or made and seconded to approve the personnel changes. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor, please indicate. And they are unanimously approved. Thank you. All right. Information and reports, committee and representative reports. Uh, Mr. Barbous, why don't we start with you?
I was...
I made sure you had something in your mouth before I...
Exactly. So, um, as you know, we concluded last year, all of our union, uh, contracts that were outstanding at the time, we had five contracts that we took care of last year. This year, we actually only have one underway, and that is, uh, the National Federation of Teachers, NFT. We render a very strict schedule as defined by the State of Connecticut, uh, Department of Education. So our negotiations were to begin June 19th. Uh, and we could start our mediation if we don't come to negotiated settlement, um, as of August 8th. And, um, that mediation can continue as, as long as until September 2nd. And as of September 2nd, that's when arbitration will begin. Um, so that's the timeline we're looking at. Uh, I've been working with our attorney, uh, Mr. Mooney, looking at the contract, um, looking at, and, and working with, uh, our staff, uh, where there are any issues that need to be addressed. Um, and, um, we've, we've started working on a list, and that's kind of where we are so far. So we're gonna, I've been talking to Mr. Mallion, um, and, um, you know, we've gotten the ball rolling, but nothing official has happened yet. But, you know, we've got to watch this calendar. We can't let too much time go by.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Keys, policy?
Nothing to report as of yet, but, um, there will be at our next meeting. Uh, but we have our next policy meeting, which will be July 21st.
Okay. All right. Uh, nothing to report for curriculum, except that I now have an action item for the next agenda, the survey. Uh, Mr. Kasimis, any report?
We'll be having a meeting, facilities meeting.
Okay, that's right. You've got an assignment too on the Briggs.
Yes, I do.
Uh, Ms. Murray, finance, any report?
Yes, I spoke with Richard before he left. We have canceled the finance meeting for July. We asked that they be sure that they had, uh, was in agreement with, uh, Mr. Conley. He's shaking his head. Okay. And our new director, so we'll cancel for July.
Okay. All right. That's the committee reports. Next, uh, board member announcements. Any board member announcements? Mr. Kasimis?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Jim for his, uh, being here for the last five months. It's been, it's been great, especially listening to all your speeches. Because they go on and on, but they're great.
Well, coming, I love coming from a clergyman.
I enjoy them.
That's a compliment.
Just to let you know, I enjoyed them. Thank you very much for, for stepping in and helping us out.
Okay. You're welcome.
I'd, I'd like to second that also, because it's, uh, it's been a pleasure working with, uh, Jim as, uh, as chairman. Um, he has, um, he's shown some real good leadership during the time that you've been here. Uh, you, we, we didn't want a caretaker, and we didn't get a caretaker. Uh, you dealt with some crises that came up, uh, very effectively, and you kept the momentum going on, on new things. Uh, you know, you pulled the, the after the bell program out of the fire there, and, uh, some of these other initiatives. So, uh, I'm, I'm very glad that we were able to snag you for a few months, and, uh, I know you're going to be heading off for the, uh, for the summer, but, uh, we're glad you, you spent this time with us.
Well, it was my pleasure. I really enjoyed it. I, one of the, uh, going through one of Artie's, Artie's stories, when I usually do a, a kind of, uh, I'm out of here, thank you, everyone, um, you go by the length of my letter, and you got one of the longer letters, where I, where I really enjoyed it. People I didn't enjoy, they get like a two, two sentence, to thank you, have a happy summer, see you later, so...
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Mosby?
I just want to say thank you for, um, being your professor for the last few months, and I wish you to have success.
Heidi?
Uh, just wanted to thank you, Jim, for your wisdom. Doesn't go with age, but just your wisdom, um, as well as your guidance, um, over these past five months. I mean, I think you've been very approachable, um, and I think you've led us well in the past several months. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And you showed perseverance too, because even that time in the middle of the winter when you did a face plant on the sidewalk.
That's from the beginning.
You still came to City Law.
Perseverance, right?
And did, did the meeting, got a little blood on the agenda, but you did the meeting, and I appreciated that perseverance.
Well, I left early.
You should walk in here first.
Yeah, I did.
Have a council meeting.
I think, I think the mayor thought I came out of a barroom brawl when I came.
Ms. Rivas?
Yes, Mr. Conley, thank you, thank you so much for, for putting up with a lot of things in the district. Uh, and, um, and, and thank you for, for listening to everyone's voice. And, uh, and you, you made me feel, uh, that my voice mattered as well, and, and everyone was listened to appropriately, and things were considered. So, so thank you very much for that. And I wish you the best happiness in whatever you decide to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Mayor?
I would just echo all of the comments made. It's been a privilege, uh, Mr. Conley, uh, introduced himself to me shortly after being appointed, came down to my office, had a nice, long conversation with Mr. Kasimis, and, uh, got to know each other, uh, about our past history. He knew all about me. I, I didn't know all about him, so I, you know, I don't know why he knew all about me, but, uh, anyway. Uh, and it was, uh, a good introduction, and, and certainly a pleasure working with you, and thank you for keeping the ship uprighted and is headed in the right direction during this time when, uh, we're searching for a permanent. So, thank you.
Yeah, one thing, uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I, I've said this on many occasions, uh, Norwalk probably has one of the best relationships between the school district and the municipality that I'm, that I've worked in. Um, and, um, you've been very supportive of the schools and on shared services. There's, we saw very little, that's not my job, that's, and, uh, you know, I just want to congratulate the community for having that kind of, uh, that kind of cooperation, and I think, um, belief in each other. I think we have credibility with the various city departments, uh, primarily the, uh, the budget and the, and the Department of Finance and the Common Council. And at the same time, um, I've just felt that the city departments I've dealt with, um, first of all, their quality of work was superb, and they were more than willing to go the, the extra mile. And the department that I had the most to deal with, and I, I say that in a, uh, in a positive way, is the police department. Uh, what you, what you folks have done with, uh, the SROs, the ability to, uh, to be very proactive with us in, in prevention and also in response. And, uh, uh, we had a situation, uh, last month that I just couldn't ask for more help from your department, as well as the, um, as well as the other law enforcement agency.
Thank you. You know, uh, in thinking how we all work together, everybody can agree to disagree, and that's what it's all about. But in the final analysis, everybody working on the Board of Education, in the school system, working throughout the community, we all have worked in our hearts and our minds all the time. The children, the community, working together to make it as best as we can. So I'm glad you were able to see it firsthand. Thank you.
Mr. Barbous?
Are we still on?
We are, we are still on, we're member announcements.
Well, I'm, we're member announcements.
We're member announcements.
So I do, I'd like to make one, um, and that's tying a little bit with Jim's department.
what it's all about, but in the final analysis, everybody working on the Board of Education, the school system, working throughout the community, we all have work in our hearts and our minds all the time. The children, the community, working together to make it as best as we can, so I'm glad you were able to see it firsthand. Thank you.
Mr. Barbous?
Are we still on?
We are still on board member announcements.
Well, board member announcements.
Board member announcements.
So I do, I'd like to make one. And it does tie in a little bit with Jim's departure, but I have been, for everybody in this room, if you remember, this winter, snow was a problem and many of us, if not all of us, were very frustrated with how snow removal was handled because our custodians can go out to 25, to 25 feet from the building, then DPW does the parking lots, then Parks and Rec does something else. Anyway, no one's really accountable and I think it's the most ridiculous system I've come across in this, in this district. And a lot of parents, a lot of staff, everybody was frustrated, have been frustrated in previous years, but this year was really the peak of it. So I've been asking the mayor, since the winter, could we please have a meeting and get everyone at the same table and talk about this? And on July 1, when it was about 85 degrees, we all did sit in the room.
That's the time to do it.
The mayor was there, Jim was there, the head of Parks and Rec was there, and a lot of people were there. Even Tom Hamilton was there. So we did have a discussion, we're looking at some things. I, you know, we're probably not going to overhaul this dramatically, but we're definitely looking at it and what the problems are. And so I want to thank all those that were part of this discussion and I did want it to be in the record that people realize that their frustrations were listened to and we are trying to do something about it as much as we can with union contracts kind of hanging over us and a lot of, you know, legacy of how it's been done.
And sometimes, Mr. Barbous, all it takes, you know, as we found out, is a quick phone call to my office or somebody else's office and say, "Look, this has to be done," and it gets done. And then we learn from that point on.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, Mr. Conley, I just want to express my thank you. I told you from the Ralph Sloan days, so, more seasoned superintendents. I appreciate the heavy lifting that you've done, the keeping it so that for myself, when I know there's a certain situation and what to you, you're able to do, move forward with dignity. You allow others who were here, allow them to actually continue with dignity and I value that. That's respect and dignity when it comes to our staff and to our teachers, administrators, and especially our students and parents. So that's something that I do hold very highly and that you've actually demonstrated the time that you're here and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. We will move on to item seven, approval of minutes for the June 16, 2015 meeting. Ms. Rivas moves to approve the minutes. Mr. Kasimis seconds. Any changes or corrections? I have one correction for the recording secretary on page five. I know that Dr. Adamowski, bottom paragraph of text, was a superintendent in Missouri, but it was not St. Louis.
It was superintendent in Cincinnati.
Cincinnati, Ohio, yes, but this one also says St. Louis, Missouri, and he was not, I think he had a Missouri position but not St. Louis.
No, he went to school in St. Louis.
Yes. He got his degree in St. Louis. So just, you know, I think his resume is attached at some point. Just take a look at it and confirm that. And Ms. Mosby?
Yes, since we're on page five, I, after reviewing these minutes, I didn't see any mentioning of the inappropriate behavior that occurred on June 16th. And I would like the minute to reflect that, you know, where the reflective behavior of a particular board member against another board member. And basically you can look and review the video to get the particulars as to who and what was said for accuracy.
Well, Mosby, Ms. Mosby, I know that's directed towards me. I actually watched the video afterwards and I saw nothing. And maybe you didn't like what I had to say, but that's how it works.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. If I can have that reflected in the minutes, that would be great. Thank you.
Why don't you take a look at the tape and then contact me and we'll see if we need to put something in the minutes? You know, the section where there was an argument? All right. Secretary and I will look at that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Ms. Murray?
I don't know something else, but can I ask on that subject? Could that be something that can be discussed with individuals that are involved before we get to the next board meeting so that that way they can have, we can have this discussion more openly? I know you said, Mr. Chair, that you were going to be reviewing and speaking with the secretary, but I just think it just needs a little more conversation possibly, but not at the board table prior to us getting here?
Well, we can certainly...
Individuals who are involved is what I'm asking.
We can, we can put together proposed language and then circulate it to the board for comments.
That would be fine. Something before we get to the table.
Okay. All right, so you and I work, work on that and circulate it. All right, subject to those changes, well, maybe we should table this because we're going to make that change. Why don't we do that? You made the motion, so would you be willing to change the motion, Ms. Rivas, to, didn't you make the motion on this one?
Yes.
Yes, to table. Murray?
You want to make the motion?
Yeah, so if you make, if you change your motion, table these minutes.
Okay, I'd like to change my...
Want to do both or just the 16th?
Yes.
Just the 16th.
I would like to table my motion.
All right. And is there a second on that? Mr. Kasimis seconds. All right, so all in favor of tabling this to the next meeting, please indicate. Opposed? One, okay, that's tabled to the next meeting. Next set of minutes is June 25, 2015. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Kasimis moves. Ms. Keys seconds. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. One, two, three, four, all opposed. Abstentions? Four, okay, so four in favor, no opposed, four abstentions. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay, so the first set is tabled. Second set is approved. The, we're ready to go into the executive session items. The, I emailed everybody on the board some information a few days ago about one of the litigation matters, Demoss versus Norwalk, and then a follow-up email I sent today. I'd asked this to get on the agenda, sent out an amended agenda, but Pat Rivera was on vacation and fell through the cracks. However, we can vote by two-thirds to add it to the agenda. So the chair would entertain a motion to add consideration of the Demoss versus Norwalk matter to the agenda for consideration. Ms. Murray moves. Is there a second? Ms. Rivas seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate. And that's unanimous, okay, so that item is added to the agenda. The chair would now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose, one, of reviewing the Demoss litigation matter and, two, update on applicants for any S school principals and directors of CGS. Ms. Rivas moves. Is there a second? Ms. Keys seconds. All in favor?
Is this for both?
For both. Okay, motion is approved and we are in executive session and we'll take a five-minute recess. Let me know when you're ready. Ready to go? Okay, good. All right, the meeting of the Board of Education is back in order. The chair would entertain a motion to add four items to the agenda. Let me, let me make the, let me describe it first and then I'll recognize you. The first would be to consider a settlement of the Demoss versus Norwalk case. Second is appointment of a director of the Center for Global Studies. Third is appointment of a principal of Ponus Ridge Middle School. Fourth is appointment of a principal of Tracy Elementary School. And away to you. Ms. Rivas moves. Is there a second? Ms. Kasimis seconds. All right, all in favor of adding these items to the agenda, please indicate. Unanimous, the items are added to the agenda. All right, first item on the new list on the agenda is settlement of the Demoss versus Norwalk case. The chair would entertain a motion to settle the case of Demoss versus Norwalk in accordance with the recommended settlement memo provided by our attorney, Michael McKean, so moved by Ms. Rivas. Is there a second? Ms. Keys seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the settlement as indicated, please indicate your vote. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right. Second item on the agenda is appointment of a director of the Center for Global Studies. The chair would entertain a motion to approve Julie Parham as the new director of the Center for Global Studies. Is there a motion? Mr. Barbous moves. Is there a second? Mr. Kasimis seconds. Any discussion? Barbous, you want to add anything? But Ms. Murray, for the record?
Just for the record, I've been engaged with Ms. Parham on a number of different levels. She's very professional, she's very, very strong. I actually was in a meeting with Suzanne Corchets yesterday and she spoke very highly of her, as can I, and I know in my own personal dealings with her, she went beyond the call of duty. She also, you know, the whole international baccalaureate program, coming to McMahon, you know, she championed that, she was on the team, she led that team with another teacher and she's to be commended for making that effort. So I think she'll be an outstanding director and I look forward to working with her.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of appointing Ms. Parham, please indicate. And that is unanimous, thank you. Second item is appointment of Ponus Ridge Middle School. The chair would entertain a motion to approve Dr. Damon Lewis as the new principal of Ponus Ridge Middle School. Ms. Murray moves. Is there a second? Ms. Rivas? I'm letting her catch up today. All right, a motion has been made and seconded to appoint Dr. Lewis as the new principal of Ponus Ridge. Is there a discussion? No, no, sorry, no discussion. Any discussion? Ms. Mosby?
I just want to say that I think that he's a good pick, calling him, you know, at that school and, you know, we decide to go with him, he'll be a good choice.
I will say, I've heard absolutely nothing but good things about Damon for quite a while.
Yes, very good choice.
And I think this is an excellent choice for this position.
I would just say I was, I was lucky to give the commencement speech for the board at Ponus. It's the first time I met Dr. Lewis and definitely commands a lot of presence at that school and thinking back to middle school, that's definitely a plus. And one of the staff there is a teacher there, a neighbor of mine, who had really, really good things to say about him. Looking forward to having him command our school there.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, I also like to add, not only in Ponus but also for the community, he definitely has, we have asked him to work on the MLK program as our emcee and a number of occasions have come up and he's stepped forward. So I just feel that he is a good fit, not only for Ponus community but for the city overall.
Okay. Anything else? All right, if not, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of appointing Dr. Lewis as Ponus Ridge Middle School principal, please indicate. Unanimous. All right, one to go. Chair would entertain a motion to approve Teresa Rangel as the principal of Tracy Elementary School. Is there a motion? Ms. Rivas, seconded by Mr. Kasimis. Is there discussion on Ms. Rangel? I will note for the record that Ms. Rangel has served apparently with distinction as curriculum instruction site director at Brookside and was, was one of the people who performed that role the way it was designed to be performed. We know that didn't happen all over the place, which is part of the reason why Dallios did what they did, but Ms. Rangel apparently did the job exactly the way it was supposed to be done and she's come well recommended, so I'm happy to support her for this position. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, proceed to a vote. All in favor of appointing Ms. Rangel, please indicate. Motion carries unanimously. All right, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kasimis, seconded by Ms. Rivas. He's got you on that.
Got you.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.
Oh, no, abstention.
One abstention.
Right.
But we're still adjourned. All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. See you on Thursday.
Thursday, 7 o'clock.
Thursday, 7 o'clock. I'll find out a meeting location, I'll send a notice. All right, I've got one thing to sign for you.
Not here, not here, me. I didn't ask.
Yeah.